Hey, John.
Yes.
So Karen is on her way, Commissioner Lot. So the question is, can we close it without her and then pull her in via phone call when we're in my office?
I don't see why that would be an issue.
Or do you want?
She'll be fine. We'd like to have-
Okay, try to get her.
... the other way, but for right now, I think we're fine. We got it. We have a quorum.
We have a quorum.
Then we're good.
And we'll have her in attendance.
That's fine. As long as she's in attendance, that's what matters.
We'll call you. Let me tell her. Okay. All right. It is 6:36, and I am going to call this meeting of the Town of Commissioners to order. We are calling to order to go into closed session, but I'm going to have the town clerk do a commissioner roll call for us.
Thank you. President Franklin.
Here.
Commissioner Brooks.
Here.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner Lot.
Commissioner Lot is on her way and will be joining us via phone once we are in closed session.
Wonderful. Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol.
Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Here.
Public Works Director Donald Bond.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
All right, so we are proposing to go into closed session under General Provisions, Article 3-305B14, before our contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal. If public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process, we are proposing to go into closed session today to discuss the Church Street RFPs that were submitted to the Town of Upper Marlboro. Is there a motion to go into closed session? With Commissioner Colbert, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Pravat, would you call the roll, please, Clark Hudson?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. You are in closed-
We are now. Thank you. We are now in closed session. The commissioners and director of Public Works, Darnell Bond, are going to go into the mayor's office and call Commissioner Lot to convene. All right, Clark Hudson, I'm just checking to make sure you can hear us.
I can hear you.
All right. Then it is 7 o'clock, and I'm going to call this regular town meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order, and we're going to start with a roll call. Clark Hudson?
Yep. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Here.
Commissioner-
Oh, I said aye. I started off weird. Sorry. Sorry, John. Go ahead. We're all here.
Okay. Commissioner Lot.
President.
Commissioner Pravat.
Here.
Town Administrator Carol Richardson.
Here.
Public Works Director Donald Bond.
Here.
Police Chief David Burse.
Here.
Town Clerk John Hudson here.
Thank you, and we'll now rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Now, I'll ask Clark Hudson to review the business items on the agenda to make sure we approve it.
Will do. Item A, Ordinance 2024-01, Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Board Vote. B, Fiscal Year 2025 Budget Book Board Vote. C, Ordinance 2024-02, Fiscal Year 2024 Budget Amendment Board Vote. D, Ordinance 2024-03 Personnel Board Vote. E, Church Street RFP Selection Board Vote. F, Town of Upper Marlboro Flag Design Board Vote. And G, Town of Upper Marlboro Three Month Plan Board Discussion.
Is there, are there any changes to the agenda?
Well, I'd like to add something.
What would you like to add?
Committee. Committee structure, committee structure. Might I add a little?
Got it. And a work session to start with?
I mean, we can, we can touch on it today, and then we can, you know, where we're going with it.
So there is a motion to add discussion of committee structure to tonight's agenda. Is there a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, so that's the adjustment. Is everyone, can we have just a all in favor, say aye to approving the agenda? That's it.
Aye.
Aye. All right, so you've approved the agenda with the addition of the committee structure at the, and I put that at the end. So we will go right into the agenda, and we are going to start with the, of the closed session summary from earlier today. The Board of Commissioners met at 6:37 PM this evening at Town Hall to go into closed session under General Provisions, Article 3-305B14, before our contract is awarded or bids are open to discuss a matter directly related to a negotiating strategy or the contents of a bid or proposal. If public discussion or disclosure would adversely impact the ability of the public body to participate in the competitive bidding or proposal process for the purpose of discussing the Church Street RFPs that were submitted to the Town of Upper Marlboro. Those, motion to go into closed session was made by Commissioner Colbert, seconded by Commissioner Pravat. Members in favor were Commissioner Brooks, Commissioner Colbert, Mayor Franklin, and Commissioner Pravat. There were none opposed, none abstaining from the vote to go into closed session. Commissioner Lot was absent, however, Commissioner Lot was present for the entire. The discussion was about the Church Street Lot RFPs, and the discussion was closed at 6:55. Motion made by Commissioner Lot, seconded by Commissioner Pravat, and unanimous vote to close the closed session. So we will now go on to item number nine on our regular town meeting agenda, which is the consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Lot, is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Colbert, Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Mr. Colbert. Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll move into the Arts Council Report. Do you have anything for this month?
Yeah. Director Barnes and I met with two members of the Arts Council Committee, and we talked about the different grants that exist, how we can somehow come together and agree to do certain things, and gave some ideas. We exchanged ideas, and basically we just have to get RFPs. We have to have someone to actually do the work. So we have to either bid it back out, or either see if the person or the company who initially agreed to do the work will still do it maybe for the same cause.
You mean the mayor?
No.
Oh. The electrical route is pocket park, so we can get started with the, the, okay, so when's the next? Trying to be good at announcing this.
Well, that's what I want to talk about.
Oh, okay. All right. All right, so we'll move on to Chief First with Cert.
Cert.
It was called Growing Green with Pride, I think, but we just called it the Town Cleanup. And they meet on the third, second Saturday? They meet here at 9:00 AM? Commissioner Colbert with Economic Development Work Group.
So we met, the Economic Development Work Group met on Monday, May 6th, talked about a number of updates to grant funding and communities' applications. As a group, we set some strategy and goals, and had some action items to get a list of town businesses, which thank you, John, for providing, well, and some other ideas. We're reaching out to the business, following up on those. Our next meeting, which is this Monday, June 3rd at 5:00.
Okay. Events Committee?
They had their last meeting last Thursday, the Marlboro Day, the Events Committee. Everyone's all ready to go, and they're still working on a little bit of things, but I think they will come, all come together January, I mean, for June, beginning.
Yeah. Marlboro Day. Excellent. Thank you. All right. Green Team? No, that's not me.
Yeah, we haven't been meeting, Sarah, in, like, I need a, maybe, yeah.
Just to finalize the committee.
That's what I wanted to talk about, the structure.
I don't even have a phone.
And that's why-
You don't have a state?
Well, that's why I put the committee structure on here, agenda, so we can discuss tonight, because there's, there's some shortfalls that we believe, that me and Andy, me.
So move on to Historic Committee. Historic Committee ran a contest for student essays. They're being reviewed, and then they will award prizes to the winners of those essays. They are also planning to meet on the third Saturday here at 10:00, so we will have to, you know, they'll have to probably not be in this room, but maybe we'll be across the hall, in the lobby. I had an email from the chair saying third Saturday in June, so, oh, Cert is the second. Oh, so we're good then. Third Saturday in June, we'll be in here. That's where that's at. Then we'll, we'll move on to Greenwell Consulting. I did, I did not ask them to attend today. They're mostly doing, like, wrap-up post-legislative session, trying to make sure all our paperwork is in. Administrator Richardson, I think you spoke to her recently about the paperwork. What's the status on that?
Yes, she is actually reaching out to the state to, I did do some research, we talked to the state, trying to find out, as we've been, forgotten, update.
Okay. All right. We will move on to Commissioners. I will start off. This month, I have attended economic development meetings. I will be, come the treasurer of PG-CMA next month, which is kind of exciting, and have been meeting with the attorneys to try to work out all the pieces we need for annexation, and as we have the consent we need, we'll start moving forward with the documentation, and also trying to get together a focus group of the people who are living near the trail entrance, and I spoke to some people this weekend, so that will be, and that's the people who were directly contacted to be in that group based on their, the location of their home. Probably some other stuff, but that's all I got right now. Commissioner Brooks, do you have anything else, you know, to report this month?
No.
Guess we all attended the Memorial Day. You attended Memorial Day yesterday. Oh.
Yes, the Memorial Day was nice, honoring the families of Bernard.
Bernard's birthday.
Yeah, Bernard. But not a big turnout, but it was very nice. It's just always good to honor the fallen victims, war and military, but yes, it was very nice.
Commissioner Colbert?
For me, in addition to the Economic Development Work Group meeting, I met with our liaison at Maryland National Capital Park Planning Commission to talk about the status of our Sustainable Communities Application, also the zone designation that'll go along with that, and I also provided testimony at the County Council Budget hearing a couple weeks ago in order to secure funding for the town's redevelopment efforts, and that follows testimony provided earlier this year, the county executive's budget, for that purpose and for Stormwater Advantage. Thanks, Lieutenant.
I can help. So Karen coordinated with Darnell Bond, the Town cleanup, and I would say even though it was a rainy day, it was successful. We had a good time. So thank you for helping with that, obviously, spring. We came to the Memorial Day, but I think a lot of the stuff that I feel like I'm involved in right now is tornado, like, you know, talking to delegates and texting and-
Advocating.
Advocating. Yeah. Cold calling and, you know, taping people down, and hopefully, the meeting with Cindy Harrison is, will happen soon. It was like two separate.
We've, we did meet with the vice chair that one time.
Yeah, but it was like a separate, yeah. And then, as you know, I've been talking to Adrian Valavo, and he gave me a connection, somebody that I can call to get more of a status on other items.
Okay. Thank you.
In here and all, didn't do it out.
Oh, you can turn that down. Yes. Commissioner Pravat has been advocating and networking for the town at the state and county level. All right. We will move on to our, our business item. Just to remind everyone of public comment procedures, if you wish to comment on a business item, if you are online, please raise your hands while we're discussing the item, so that it's up and we can see it. If you're in person, you'll come up to the podium. When we ask for comments, please state your name and the street you live on. You don't need your address, just the street, and those are our procedures. You have three minutes for your comments. We'll start with item A, which is Ordinance 2024-01, which is the FY 2025 Budget. Clark Hudson, would you read this into the record, please?
Will do. Ordinance 2024-01, Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced April 23rd, 2024. Date enacted May 28, 2024. Effective date, June 17, 2024. An ordinance of the commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro approving and adopting the budget for the Town of Upper Marlboro for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2024, and ending June 30 of 2025, fiscal year 2025, establishing the various town tax rates for the, for fiscal year 2025, including a vacant property tax rate, and setting the compensation for employees and officers, and to establish certain procedures for reviewing and amending the same, as more particularly to set forth herein.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions from the commissioners on this? Do department heads have any last-minute concerns that we haven't addressed yet? All right. We'll now open the floor to the public for public comment on this item. Do we have anyone online, Clark Hudson?
No one with their hands raised.
All right. Seeing no public comment, I will ask if there is a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-01, FY 2025 Budget. Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Brooks, Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We will now move on to FY 2025 Budget Book, also a board vote. Clark Hudson outdid himself, as per usual, with this beautiful book, which you can see some of online, and Clark Hudson, would you like to say anything about it? Because you did put in the, a lot of time to make this.
Well, we put it together based upon the town branding strategy. We also made sure that we utilized photographs that told the story about where residents taxes, how they are spent. So it's good to, to have a visual as well as a guide as to, to guide people through the municipal budgeting. So this is the presentation that we've prepared, and hopefully, it's a good resource for the community.
Thank you very much for putting it together. Do your commissioners have any questions, comments?
That, I think was just, I go online to y'all.
Do department heads have any last minute? Right. Public may comment. Is, are there any hands raised online?
No hands online.
No one in the audience has gotten up, so I will ask if there is a motion to approve the FY 2025 Budget Book. Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Pravat, Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot.
No.
And Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries.
We will move on to Ordinance 2024-02, FY 2024 Budget Amendment. Clark Hudson, would you read that into the record for us?
Will do. Ordinance 2024-02, Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced April 23rd, 2024. Date enacted, May 28, 2024. Effective date, June 17, 2024. An ordinance of the commissioners of the Town of Upper Marlboro adopting and approving amendments to the fiscal year 2024 budget as adopted in Ordinance 2023-03.
All right. This amendment just takes, kind of, looks at revenues and expenses, tries to balance things out, and if we're needing to budget additional expenses elsewhere, do we need? Okay. If we need to budget additional expenses elsewhere, we can do that at that time, and one sort of prominent thing on that is that we do need to take down some dangerous trees, so we need to allocate the money to do that before we can call the folks, take care of that. And just so that commissioners are aware, we will do a reconciliation in August that will make sure everything is all equal and proper. Are there any questions or comments about this? Right? Do department heads have any additional questions, comments, concerns? All right.
Did you have anything to adjust? No.
Are there any hands raised online?
There are none online.
I see no comments in the room, so I'm asking if there's a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-02. Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Brooks, Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Mr. Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
All right, we'll move on to Ordinance 2024-03 Personnel. Clark Hudson, would you read that into the record, please?
Will do. Ordinance 2024-03, Session Regular Town Meeting Introduced April 23, 2024. Date enacted, May 28, 2024. Effective date, June 17, 2024. An ordinance to amend Ordinance 2023-04 to reestablish and change cer, certain aspects of a personnel system with certain guidelines, pay grade, salary standards, and procedures for the employees of the Town of Upper Marlboro.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
So is this outside of the standard handbook?
Yes.
So can we get a little more detail on what this is?
So this ordinance is adopted every year. It establishes the pay grades, and it just reaffirms the procedure for hiring.
Oh, right.
This is, we discussed this in closed session with Attorney Russ. You remember?
Yes.
It's norm, it doesn't always need to be changed, but it did need to be changed. Any comments online?
No hands raised.
And no one is getting up in the audience, so I'll ask if there's a motion to approve Ordinance 2024-03. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Commissioner Lot, Commissioner Brooks, Clark Hudson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We are going to move on to the Church Street RFP selection. I am actually going to turn it over to Director Barnes to give us yet another overview of the proposals that came in.
For RFP 2024-0, we solicited five firms, as well as posting on the town website, around the marketplace, and reach out to contact. We received two proposals in the designated timeline, one from Site Design based here in Marlboro, and another from Charles D. Johnson Associates based out of St. Springfield. Both included regulatory items that went above and beyond what was requested in the scope to make sure that this project made an eye affection. to make sure that this project made an EPI objection. Both included additional services to assist with the construction phase of the project. What really boiled down to would, would really set these funds apart was one of them actually did the research of the lay of the land, so to speak. And realized that the bottom of the parking lot is within the 100-year flood plain. And they, and they took into account that cost. To make sure that, you know, those things were included. Maybe a little bit of a difference with EPI when they actually give us some direction as to what to do. But they actually did homework. What also boils down to is, one of them pretty much is doing a per-service flat rate with hourly rate add-ons for additional services versus hourly per employee with added on hourly rates. That pretty much is the, the main talent as far as the significant costs. And what it really, really boiled down to was the significant cost difference. I think really. Not sure if we're.
So I guess it's just, do we have any other questions? I know we've talked, follow-up questions, anything? Do?
No, no more questions about the negotiations.
Yeah, exactly. Any questions from staff or Director Bond? All right. Are there any comments online?
No comments online.
No one is getting up in the audience, so. I, it does, is there a motion to award the Church Street RFP contract to site, site design? They have, that's all?
Yes, almost.
Site Design Incorporated pending contract negotiations with the library. So who's going to make the motion? Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Pravat. Clerk Cosson, would you call the roll?
Will do. President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
On to kind of Upper Marlboro flag design. We talked about this last time, we all kind of approved it. Are there any other questions or comments? Is there any public comment online, Clerk Cosson?
I see no hands raised.
And no one has gotten up in the audience. So I ask if there's a motion to approve the Town of Upper Marlboro flag design.
I'll move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Commissioner Colbert, Commissioner Lot, Clerk Cosson, would you call the roll?
Will do. Commissioner Brooks, I mean President Franklin.
Aye.
Commissioner Brooks.
Aye.
Commissioner Colbert.
Aye.
Commissioner Lot. Commissioner Lot.
Aye.
Commissioner Pravat.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
We're going to move on to our discussion with regard to what we want to tackle over the next three months. First, can I just say, like, congratulations to us, especially our new commissioners. We have just successfully passed the budget and all the necessary items. So that is exciting. Our slate is clean. I did ask the clerk to highlight the two items we frequently talked about tackling next. But these are all the items that are on the rolling agenda. We want to additionally put committee structure on there for Commissioner Lot's, us tonight. But I guess the question I want to ask, given our summer calendar, is how do we want to start tackling this? We have one meeting next month, then we'll have two in July, two in August. And so we have time to attack each item. But do we want to start with property standards and charter review changes? Or do we want to make a shift back? What is everyone's thought?
We could start with the charter review changes, but the only thing is we only have one meeting next month. So it's kind of, kind of.
The thing I was thinking about charter review changes is that maybe we could have sort of a general discussion and talk about, you know, go over charter review process again and in general stuff so that then we go into MML with all of that kind of in our brains, which helps us kind of take in the information MML provides us while thinking about the charter to help us really kind of, so we can talk to, all that networking will allow us to ask other towns and cities how they handle charter things. That's the only reason I thought to keep it on in June. I don't know what everyone thinks of that.
Better keep it just as a discussion, not as a.
Yeah, just a, a general, like, overview of how we do this. I know that Commissioner Pravat and Commissioner Brooks are kind of experts in this, so hopefully they can kind of provide some background and advice. But just to kind of get a general discussion of what kind of directions we're thinking about, what every, everyone's thoughts are. Because then when we go to MML, it allows us to use that time, I think.
That's a good idea.
I don't know, you can disagree.
No, I, I like the idea, I just don't want to, I don't want to be deciding on any.
Yeah.
It doesn't really sound like, it's like one meeting.
Yeah, June is just like, it doesn't have a lot on it. So that's why I kind of thought.
Could be a good time.
The mention of property standards, are the attorneys still reviewing the package that the ordinance that has been out there? I mean, you've been putting on that for a long time. Where, where are we at with that?
I believe she is almost done drafting it. There have been other things kind of coming up, but I will check in with her on that. If she has a draft of it, then we could look at it.
And invite her so we can all talk about the things that we would like to see on the charter.
We can just, you want to just invite her to the June meeting, in general? Let me just put that.
Is that too preliminary? Because we don't have our thoughts together. We're just going to be discussing it in June.
True, but if we want her there on property state end, or then she can provide advice. And I think the attorney before, when you guys ran the charter review committee, did she provide a general overview of others and? So we can ask her to do that.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, regarding the charter review changes. Yeah, that's a good, I think you want to move quickly on it.
Right.
It should be a really in-depth discussion, looking at everything that we went over.
And I'm sure there's a lot more discussions after, you know, we left. So there's even things that we're not privy to, that we would probably really want to look at.
Yeah, yeah.
And I always love hearing from like the other municipalities. Like, I've learned a lot about vacant property ordinances, which we should look at at these conferences and talking to other municipalities.
Yeah. So yeah, that's something we really need to look at, discuss. Nothing to rush on because, when I was on the charter review, I was in the town commission at the time and it was me, now Commissioner Pravat, and one of the residents here today. And we spent a lot of time on that and I was looking at everything. So I think with going to MML, that would help us.
Kind of give us an idea of what to ask people. Is there anything else on this? Like, we probably should put committee structure, depending on how our conversation goes after this, on to June, potentially?
Yeah, we can put committee structure on June.
Is there anything anyone else feels like should be bumped up? Or do we want to, you know, hit things in July?
Meeting regulations is not a big Q and Q still, but the things that we can kind of knock out, like for meeting regulations, for me, I think the residents should, because we're here to serve the residents, I think they deserve more than three minutes, especially if it's a handful of people here. Two, three, four, five people here, it's not a whole room full of people. I think we should give them what they have. An issue that they want to discuss, considering that we are here to serve them. So I think things like that, we can knock off our list and just make changes to upgrade what we already have. I think that should be something that we can just cross off the list.
Well, I know the attorney had some comments on our meeting regulations, that she had some suggested changes. So maybe we can plan to tackle that in July or August, based off where we are with property standards? Anything, I mean, the Church Street parking lot, obviously we talked about tonight. Annexation is going to come up once the annexation ordinance is together and surveyed in and all of that.
Maybe we should also try to tackle the records management and the retention and stuff like that. Because I know that, you know, certain records you only have to keep for a certain amount of time.
Right.
And having a whole bunch of stuff stored at Iron Mountain or wherever.
And what exactly is that conversation like, are we just going away or? I think we should actually ask Clerk Cosson, he's the expert on the records retention and disposal schedule. So if he can advise us what that is. Could you do that, Clerk Cosson?
Sure. The record retention policy was written back, I want to say, 2009. And it basically states, you know, how long we have to keep certain records. So, and what it is, it's actually written and then approved by the state. And then the state approves it, the state archives. And there are certain records that we can actually provide to the archivist. And then there are certain records that we need to hold on to for a certain amount of time. So we are actually going to be updating the record retention policy to reflect because when it was originally written, it didn't include electronic documents and, and items of that sort. So they're actually going to be able to work that into the dis- record retention and disposal schedule. So that's why it needs to be updated. It needs to go into the state. It does take a while to do it. It's not a fast process at all.
We'll try and tackle that. I do just want to, like, this is out of the three months, but I wanted to let everyone know that the Board of Supervisors election appointments happen in September. And I think we usually start putting out, putting information in July or August. And the town just kind of posts that and sees who flies and then we'll, you know, do all that. Want to stick that on your radar if you have a neighbor who's interested or you're talking to a resident and they seem interested, just let them know to look out for that as it comes up. Okay. All right. Anything else on this?
So the plan is to get through all of this.
No. The plan is to get through property standards, charter review, meeting regulations, and record retention before we hit fall. That some of that's going to, because annexation's going to come up once it's ready. And that's, it's probably going to push into fall. These are the items we as a board have identified we need to tackle. So we can add, we'll add items as they come up. This is kind of.
A rolling agenda.
A rolling agenda, right? So anytime anyone thinks of something we should tackle, it goes on the rolling agenda. And what I'd like to do is, we had the budget, that was huge. I didn't want to take on other huge things. But when we finish a big project, have a, just a quick conversation about what we want to prioritize coming up next. So that's, maybe we can get all done by December. I don't think so. This kind of annuity of operations plan is a, a long, a long process.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say.
A lot of these are long processes.
Annuity of operations plan, I've kind of been flying, flying without that as, as a town for a while.
Yes.
God forbid anything happened to anybody. But, you know, I, I strongly believe there needs to be some type of mitigation action or plan in place. Make sure services are being bettered to make sure residents are getting what they need to make sure we're, the train is still moving.
And, and I think some of that is going to come up in charter review. Because right now that's, it's not an okay situation. All right, so that's the plan. Whenever annexation is ready, I will preempt the plan with that coming in because it's important that we get it done as soon as it's ready. But it does take a long time for these terms to get everything together. So let's move on to committee structure. And I think, you know, Commissioner Lot, I'm going to ask you to, I, I have concerns too, so I think this is a good discussion, but do you want to?
Yeah. So basically, I've been meeting the last few months with the arts. We have two members, I'm concerned, very concerned with the amount of ideas that they have. I can't support them. I can't support them. It's just way too much. And we have to have a structure. We need a secretary, we need someone who's, because, I mean, I was told before that, you know, we're the liaison, so we're not supposed to be, you know, but I'm all hands in because I have no, no folks. So I feel like we should put a pause on it right now because right now it's, it's not a doable situation. It's very difficult. I think we should focus on the, the. Focus on the committees that bring, you know, something to the town. And right now, the arts committee, it is a fun thing, but if we don't have the, the people to support it, it's a lot of work and it's a lot of ideas. And we're going in a circle. We have, we talk, we talk, we have different ideas and we talk and we talk. But are we actually going to bring these things to fruition? You know, it's a different experience when, like, I was on the events committee and we had people that were volunteering and willing to do it. I think so. We need to focus on putting a structure in place for each committee that we want to, if we want them to survive. Because right now, I just think it's a, it's a, sorry to say, we're going in a circle and I don't have time to waste. And I feel like it's wasting valuable time and energy. And it's unfortunate because I really wanted to do some things with them. But if I don't have the bodies, it's very difficult to turn it out. Director Barnes was at the meeting, it was two people, the same two or three people are there. If a third person comes, and that's it. But everybody has these huge, larger-than-life ideas, you know, some of them. And it's just like, how are we going to get these things done if we don't have the people? That means that basically is my show. And it's not supposed to be like that. It's a, what I'm saying, it's not supposed to be like that. This is, this is for the residents, this is their show. And I'm just supposed to support them and help them bring their ideas forward. And I'm willing to do that if I have adequate, an adequate structure in place. And I do not have that at this time.
I, I agree, but there's, the committees are very sparse, right? And there are, the events committee is pretty much works, right? It's got people, they've been there a while. It kind of does its own thing and works. The green team and the economic development work group give us access to grants.
Right, so those are the important ones.
And so. We've been kind of having this internal discussion about the committees and then the people.
The ones that are important like that, those are the ones that we should focus on. And maybe, maybe do an all-hands-on-deck. Like, so if a person is volunteering for one team, they can volunteer. They, it's just, it's just, to me, I was thinking about it, I was like, maybe just have one team that, you know, that, okay, when we have something for the green team coming up or the events committee, that all-hands-on-deck, everybody focuses on that. So it's just not all these broken up committees that are not fully stacked. That's just a thought.
Here's an idea. What if we kind of put out a, like? First, we have the volunteer online form, so we separate all those email addresses and send out on constant. separate all those email addresses, and send out a constant contact, um, and, online, and all out, like, here is the meeting, you know, here's, here's this meeting date-
Just done that.
For this thing. If no, if more than four people do not show up, this committee will be put on pause. And, and sign, and they have to sign up for roles. Um, or, and we can have it, like, just a day, committee day, everyone come in, so that everybody, you know, we don't all have to, and then, then that's it. If four people didn't show up, that committee gets a pause. Um, that's the benefit of our, our legis, the way our legislation is written, we can pause any committee, we don't have to, and it's just that, y'all have the ones that give us access to grant funding.
And, I mean, my concern with my committee is that we've probably met, uh, I've-
Yeah, you met Stacy, but you did, you haven't met yet.
Yeah. And so, like, I honestly don't know, um, even how to begin with the committee, because it's like what you said, it's the committee for their own, and we're liaisons, but-
The green team is.
I don't know what's going on with the committee.
It's kind of falling apart, honestly. So, so I think that's, maybe we do an all-call-in, it's either important enough to you to show up and sign up for a potential leadership role on X day, or it's not, and then that's-
We haven't even planted the garden this year, right?
So, the garden situation is complicated, because church has the land for the garden. So, the church has to provide us with a liaison and time, when we can go over to the garden and open it up. Their former liaison is no longer there, the new liaison has not provided us with time to work in the garden, and so, we're, um, going back and forth with the church to try to get that worked out. Uh, we are talking about setting up a garden across the street in that little piece of land we own, um, how, there's some invasive trees that, that need to be taken down, um, there is a ground, I can see groundhogs when I walk back and forth, um, so, and because it's streetfront property the town owns, we need to have a fence that is attractive. Um, so, there's a lot to make that happen. Um, I did, my son and I planted some pumpkins, which are currently going to be growing up here at Town Hall, uh, but I think that's all that's going to happen, is Town Hall staff is growing pumpkins. Uh, who cares? So, um, so I, I agree that, you know, we're a small town, we only have six hundred and fifty residents, and we're trying to staff six committees. It's much. I don't know, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I mean, I think if certain committees don't have enough people, there's nothing you can do at the moment, you know, you can send something out again, and if that's saying, oh, who wants to help with this, who wants to help with that, if you don't get a response, we have to move on to the bigger things.
And support the ones that are actually going to support the town. Like, I would be willing to help if the arts committee is not, you know, important, I'll be willing to help the green team to do stuff.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And I, but I agree with Darn, um, I mean, it seems like a lot of effort for a committee if it's understaffed and also doesn't have its own budget, and it's somehow going to-
Or structure.
Yeah.
Secretary of whatever, and whatever.
Oh, yeah, the staff.
We need, we need some, we need the structure there, so that if I'm not there, someone is running the, because right now, I'm running the meeting.
You shouldn't be running.
Right, but-
Happening.
It's what's happening, so I adapt with the situation.
So, I had an idea that doesn't require to have another meeting, which is to put a call out to everyone who's volunteered, and ask them to say, who's willing to step up into a leadership role and coordinate and organize meetings, instead of us coordinating and organizing the meeting. And then if no one comes back and steps up, no one comes back and steps up, and we just send another email saying, you know, because we have to nominate them and everything, too.
Right, so, I mean, yeah, so if we put out a bulletin, see who bites, if not, um, I won't be doing any more.
I think it's a couple of things, I completely understand if we don't have the volunteers to have these, so, purpose of the committees, who are the committees serving, our, our committees providing value to the town. I personally think that all of our committees are important, I think the arts committee in the past, you know, has provided us access, but we had partnerships with PG Arts Council, we had a lot of different things going on in the town at a, at a certain time, that was a heavy lift for volunteers. I think one of the things we probably need to think about as, as a town too, is, what are we doing to make volunteering exciting? What are we doing to actually, you know, what's our recruitment strategy for volunteers, aside from putting something on, uh, constant contact, or something like that? I know at one time, we had a list of people who came to different events, to Marlboro Day, or whatever, and said, I'm interested in this committee, or whatever, and potentially reaching out to those individuals, maybe they're not getting constant contact, maybe they're not getting whatever the call for volunteers is, uh, but at least, you know, taking a little bit of effort to say, hey, saw that you signed up for this, that you wanted, that this was important to you, would you be willing to be on the meeting? I'll say that, that's what's worked for, uh, some of the members of the economic development committee, was a phone call saying, you wanted, you expressed interest in this, this is what we're doing, you know, and, and, and getting the relationship that way. And, I think that's worth a try, and if it doesn't necessarily, you know, generate or gin up any more interest, then sure, you can put down that path of suspending until you get the interest. Um, but I, I, I'd want to think about how we are soliciting our volunteers, and how we are keeping them excited about the things that we're doing, to make sure that they want to take a leadership role in doing, in doing something special.
Any ideas on how to cultivate and solicit?
Well, that was the one idea, if we have the list of, uh, volunteers, or folks who've expressed interest before, maybe somebody just give them a quick call, and say, hey, uh, you know, you expressed interest in this committee before, this is what we're doing, this is what we're trying to do, trying to get your ideas, would you be willing to come to a meeting? At least open the door to, you know, have that conversation. And if they're not, then they're not, but, you know, at least we're, sometimes with, with volunteers, with individuals, you know, these, these aren't paid gigs for, for volunteers, so sometimes you have to do or reach out to get, back on you, just about.
Something that I can do, um, and this has been successful, of course, if I send an email to the list, like, you all were interested, we are going to schedule a meeting, please reply back to your availability, and what I can do is I could make that, like, me and you, for part of council and BCC, every one of you, please reply back, come in to both of us, thanks for bringing team, um, and then see if that gets us a committee or not.
Is there a deadline that we're going to, if, see what works, and?
And then they, I think if, if we send out this email, right, and no one gets back to us within a week, then they're not.
Well, maybe, um, on the, uh, events committee, you think, I don't know how much time people have, but Marlboro, after Marlboro Day winds down, you think some of the people from the events committee will settle over?
Not, they don't, they like to-
They like to take a break after the big, okay.
Not particularly. And I don't know, like, we are always getting, um, new volunteer, so when someone says they're interested in events committee, actually a U of Staff member, right, if she actually reaches out to them, tells them about the next meeting day, would you say you have a lot of new people coming in?
No.
The same people.
It's seven, about seven people.
Same people.
Yeah. So, I said, you know-
And they get tired too.
Yeah.
They do a lot, when they, when I was on the events committee, they did a lot, um, and they do come out, but they do a lot when they do come out, and, um, they like things a certain way, so switching gears may be difficult or challenging for some.
So, just give it one more whoa.
Yeah. You think the number of interest forms that come in don't equate to the n- number of new members?
Well, we also need to consider showing up community interest, because I would like to still do a community event, like I did last year, um, um, in the name of, uh, the town. We did something, yeah.
It's on the calendar.
Yeah, well, I'm saying, I would like to do something, again, I'm saying, but we did not have a whole lot of people come out, you know, and we, we had a nice event.
I will say that, um, a lot of work, but, Darnell, can you correct me if I'm wrong, do you feel like dropping off the flyers at the doors for the town cleanup helped any, or do you think that it's just? You can be honest.
I'm still seeing flyers on Spring Branch Drive for, you know, for painting stuff. Um, I mean, you, you're going to have maybe three or four that, oh, I'm interested because this is in my face, and then it drops, it takes off.
Because I did go to, specifically Derek, at the town of Marlboro, and I spoke to people face-to-face there, like, well, it rained that day, so I'm trying to give them a pass, like, they said they would.
The signup sheet at Marlboro Day.
Yeah, we can do sign up at Marlboro. The, the big thing about cleanup, and this is a benefit the green team has, because one of the green team members works at Pepco. Um, and so, and we've also had Target, so these, these bigger organizations in the area will want to do volunteer days, and they'll approach the town about that. But if there's not a committee set up to take those volunteers and give them something to do, then that's where the problem comes in, those people aren't going to be staffing our committees. We really need the community to staff the committees, and I know that the August event is a little challenging, because we want to keep it to be a resident event.
Yeah, but, but I was, we were successful that year, I mean, but, you know, I don't, I per se didn't need a whole staff to put that together, that was pretty simple. Um, it's just that, hopefully, everyone gets to come, all the commissioners come out this time to support it, and, um, and-
We, you, I didn't say you weren't there.
I'm just saying, all of us need to be there, because that's, if we are putting, it's community day, so it's, it's really important, I think, that all of us are there, because this is the time we get to meet and greet people, we're not really working, we're talking, we're eating, you know, we're clowning, this is a relaxed time, you know what I mean? Uh, versus Marlboro Day, when it's things we all have to do, this is just time, eat, enjoy yourself, and, and talk, and talk to your residents. And we have some funding games and stuff like that for the kids, and now we got the park that's open, so, you know, to entertain the kids, you know, for the parents. Um, so I just think that all hands on deck for community days is important, especially, um-
I would say all of us.
All of us, uh, that's what I'm saying, all of us, well, we can, but sometimes we have challenges in our schedules, and I get it, but, um, that's the last hurrah for the year, I mean, for, you know, closing out the summer, so the parents are bringing the kids, we just want to, I want to see more participation in community day, period, you know, um.
But you know, with Marlboro Cleanup Day, there were two ladies that didn't live in the town.
Well, Pepco team doesn't live in the town, and they can't-
Yeah, there, I remember two ladies with us near the pond, they came out, they don't live in the town, and that was, there was a gentleman, yeah, I didn't, yeah, that was really, uh-
Honestly, most of our volunteers don't live, oh, hold, sorry, um, most of our volunteers, Derek, our Commissioner Brooks makes a good point, that most of our volunteers don't actually live. We're staffing committees with people who aren't residents, and then the more we try to provide things just to residents, and then they feel excluded, but they're doing the work, and then we do want to meet with just res, it's like this challenge of the people who are volunteering and doing the work aren't the same people who are-
Well, we only did that for that event, the, the-
Right.
End of the year, the end of the summer event, we just wanted to home in on our people and our residents, our, the, the children of, of the community, but the, all the other events are open to everybody, so they should, that shouldn't be a feeling that is felt, because it's open to everyone. I mean, that's the only one that we say, okay, this is just for our community, and I think it's, it's safe to say that that's not a bad idea, we need to make our residents feel special.
In residents, there is a special resident-only treat giveaway at Marlboro Day that you can get, by making sure you're signed up on V A R. We did that at Christmas time, too, it was kind of, when we had events, every Sunday, there was something special.
Okay, so we're going to give a last hurrah, to see who wants to volunteer, and if not, we'll table it out.
If committees aren't staffed, then we'll table them.
Yeah, okay.
All right, then, um, we can move on to administrative updates. Um, I'm go, I'm going to lead, do you guys have any administrative updates? I have something. You too. Um, can I? Um, go ahead, sorry, no, go ahead.
I will, I-
Sorry, I just want to, um, so, um, our town clerk has been offered a, um, opportunity he cannot refuse elsewhere, uh, so he will be leaving us. Um, we are very sad to see him go. He has been dedicated to the town, he has, um, really, like, improved, elevated, um, our graphics and the image, um, the marketing, how we outreach over his time here, um, it's been really great to work with him, and I just wanted to take some time, because his, he won't be at our next meeting, at this meeting, to just let him know that we really appreciate everything he did, we wish him the best of luck, um, and only good things. Does anyone want to?
Yeah, I do, I, I've told John, this myself, coming here with the charter review board, starting as a commissioner, he's always been helpful to me, professional to me, and I told him, I hope we can find someone that can step up to help me with things, and I wish him all the best in his new position.
Same here, uh, since I came aboard, um, he was very welcoming, um, provided me with information, um, when I was kind of, didn't know what was going on, he was able to walk me through some things, um, he will be sorely missed, um, and, um, just his personality and his spirit, you know, he's always willing to go that extra mile, he's a perfectionist, and, you know, I hope that we can find someone who can try to walk in his shoes here. Wish you well, John.
Yeah, I also that John has been nothing but kind and respectful, and, um, is bittersweet, I'm excited for him, his new opportunity, but I also think that, um, I wish I could have gotten to know him a little bit more, I don't feel like we got to work enough, so, um, but-
He'll, he'll fill you.
Yeah.
I echo the same sentiment, John, as I mentioned earlier, uh, before the meeting, I appreciate all the hard work you've done for the town, uh, and I completely understand the desire to elevate and, and expand your horizons, so I definitely wish you all the best, and thank you again for all you've done.
Thanks, John.
Well, I would like to say to all of you, I want to thank you all for this wonderful opportunity, it truly has been an honor to serve you as town clerk, coming up on three years, and I will always cha- carry the memory of the Crane Monument Centennial in my heart forever. Happy Charles to you all, until we meet again.
Thank you, John. Okay, so, I know that was like a big thing, so we'll go on, but Chief Bruce, you had other admin, oh, you want Darnell?
Um, just really quick, I spoke to John at length this morning when I found out that I was leaving. Definitely going to be sad to see you go, definitely going to miss your upbeat spirit, I want to thank you for all the guidance and everything, you know, that you, you know, helped pull me through, but I just wanted to take a moment for that, and thank you, um, to the residents of Spring Branch Drive, again, um, they wanted to schedule the seal coding for this coming Friday, however, with it being prom season, graduation season, and not giving you guys at least a week notice, I'm looking at the week of the 10th, um, they're trying to see if they can accommodate, and if so, there will be another notice coming to you shortly. Um, also waiting for the speed hop signs, uh, the polls that have been erected, um, the, we did a- Um, also waiting for the speedhump signs, uh, the poles that have been erected, um, the, we did a temporary strike, you know, just to make sure everyone can see them at night, um, so hopefully that'll be closed-out projects.
And they're gonna do the official strike, but they just couldn't do them because of the, the weather's been horrible, yeah.
I love the fact that I don't have to drive on them.
I enjoyed the speedhump, I got excited about it.
I mean, I've never.
Spring Branch Drive has long wished for that. All right, that was.
So, um, John, I'd like to echo what everybody else has said, thank you for your time and, uh, creativity and the things that we've, uh, seen you do here at the town, so I just really appreciate it, thank you for the opportunity, uh, to learn some of the stuff that you showed me about records of retention and things of that nature, so I wish you well in your new job and new assignment. Um, so with that said, uh, the police space. So, um, I've had, uh, several conversations with the town attorney, I think everybody has seen the space now, understanding that everybody's in agreement sort of with the space, okay?
It's the budget that we just passed.
Um, I've talked to her, she's had some adjustments with the original lease that they sent. Um, I'm doing one thing before I push it back to her and get you all's thoughts on it, is because she actually suggested it based on our audit, so I just need to get our insurance company over to the space to make sure they're comfortable, okay, and approve of everything, so I just want to let everybody know that's the latest update, um.
I just wanna clarify, you mean the, the, our insurance company?
Yes.
Audit of space, so they're gonna come over and make sure that space is clear for our insurance, okay?
Right, and then that, um, hopefully to get that to you all within the next week or so, hopefully for the June meeting, so that you all can see everything, and then hopefully we can move forward from there, if that's okay?
We can put police space on the, the June meeting agenda.
Um, the other thing is, uh, I talked about this about a year ago, it's not been quite a year yet, but town-wide cameras. Um, as everybody knows, we have the four speed cameras, but you also need some type of surveillance cameras, not putting them in anybody's yard or anything like that, but at about six intersections, like Main and Water, maybe Church and Governor, I mean, Church and, um, Water Street, Governor Oden, Main Street, uh, places like that, because we have seen in and around the town where the town has been called by the county police to ask, hey, did this particular vehicle go past this, you know, the speed cameras and trip it, because we need that tag number? But because of where this area is located and there's an uptick in crime, there's not a lot of cameras that are in this area other than on businesses, but I think it's something we need to look at as a town. Um, I've actually applied for some grants for one of the police spaces, there's also coming a grant for particular cameras, so I'm just letting you know that I think this is something we need to look at, um, and I think the grant opens either next month or it's, uh, August, July or August, so I would like to put in for it. So I'm just letting you guys know that I think this is something that, um, you know, we have a lot of people moving around in the downtown area, we're having some issues down there with people having domestics and stuff after the court situation, and then once they leave the court property, you know, it's on us, so we're also, um, looking to increase our staffing as well, so these grants will actually, uh, help us set out some of the costs from the town, this is basically grant money. Bring those two things up. You said you'd like to have about six cameras?
Six locations.
Six locations?
Yes.
Okay. Where, what you said, which street you said? So, uh, so like Main and Water, Water and Judges, Pratt and Judges, Main and Governor Oden Louie, Elm Street and Governor Oden Louie, then Main Street in front of the courthouse. If you notice, maybe four of those are in and around the courthouse, because there's a lot of movement around the courthouse, and everything that happens off of the property is basically the town's responsibility and not the court. And the court has cameras on their property, but they're not facing outward, they're basically facing inward. But some of the issues are on the outside where they're not capturing stuff, and it's causing, you know, some concerns and stuff. You know, we've had a few issues in the town, uh, where like the, the dog plays rough cuts. They tried to steal four dogs, they were $3,000 apiece, you know, and it was with a handgun. So the person came back through the town, but they probably turned down Water Street where there's no camera, because the way that they left out of the parking lot, they went down one of the streets that had a camera, which they've gotten, but they probably went down Water Street, which is the easiest way to get to Route 4 to go north or south, but they called us, actually had two people call on two different days, hey, did you all get anything? So we checked, and I knowed to make a model of the vehicle, is we just can't see the tag number.
Um, this is sort of unreal, but will these cameras be something that Director Bond can look at when there's like a weather event, and he wants to just see how things are looking? Um, not that, that's their main purpose, but I know sometimes, he said, I wish there was a camera over here so I could see what it looks like. Um, I don't know if that's an allowable use.
So like, just to give you that, Main and Water Street, it would probably be four cameras to hit the two, you know, the two intersections, looking down each road.
Right.
Just kinda seeing, you know, movement, cars, and people, you know, nothing to just zoom in on, anything like that, but you can just get a, a overview, okay, this person had on a green shirt, this person had on a blue shirt, but, you know, if there's mainly car traffic, it's what these individuals are using, so it's mainly to try to capture them. We already have the resolution with the speed cameras, so we just have to amend it to, to.
I guess I'm just asking if like, the security cameras could also serve some sort of weather, before not because of their security function.
It doesn't matter, it's just a question.
Just depending on where they're going, I mean.
Yeah.
You know.
Just, just a small touch on that. I doubt they would do it, however, we can put in a request for that kind of traffic monitoring, which is what they use to, obviously. It would be controlled by them, however, we may be able to get access to it.
Are you thinking about the cameras that's already on top? So if we can get this system, there's a link that we can subscribe to, and we can watch in real time the cameras of cars, but they don't record, that's the only problem, it's just main traffic, but our cameras will record, so, yeah, we, we can get a link to, to view those cameras at three intersections, Main and Water, um, or Oden, and then, um. Actually, it's only those two intersections, yeah.
That's fine, sorry, I didn't mean to sidewalk track us, but, um, do you, guys have any questions? Logistically, just what, when, when we win those grants, we will do quick budget adjustments, which is so show grant money coming in and grant money going out, and those should be just like fast, two lines, start changing, um, adjustments, so, um. Richard, did you have anything?
Yes, um, I wanna just echo what everyone said about John, you know, when I first got here, um, I've been in government for a long time, and immediately I saw his work ethic, his professionalism, and his thoroughness, and as time went on, I just, um, noticed how he is committed to doing his job and doing it the best every time, so, um, that should be admired, um, and I wish him the best, um, in his new position and going forward. Um, I wanted to just let you all know, we're moving forward with planning Marlboro Day, we are gonna have a staff meeting tomorrow, but right now, we have about nineteen nonprofit booths, we got about twenty-three participants in the parade, um, we have two or three entertainers, depending on, we look at our money, and we have about seven volunteers, and we have about $2,800 in donations, so that's established right now.
Um, so, we'll, just to add, we have to like close roads and set up stages, and, there's a lot more. Um, okay, so we're gonna move on to general public comment, um, if you have a comment online, please raise your hand. Um, we're gonna take our in-person comment first.
Thank you, I've got Church Street. Um, guys were wondering about how to get out to people, I haven't seen the landings in at least a year. We used to send them out once a month, then we sent them out once a quarter, I haven't seen one in forever, and that was one of the ways that all of the town's personnel would receive information from the town about events and about things that were going on. So just thought I'd throw that out there. Um, I noticed that there's a grant funding pool, and it isn't really moving, do we have a, is there any danger of us losing some of that grant money because we're not using it? Just a question. Um, I wanna congratulate you guys on the $6.2 million for stormwater management, saw that, surprised it didn't come up in the meeting. Um, and I just wanted to remind you all, June 22nd, Maryland, um, Maryland House and Art pilgrimage is having all their tours coming through PG County, and, uh, one of them is at our house, so, uh, I don't know, we're gonna see an influx of people in the town, uh, we usually get about a hundred and fifty people coming in, um, and I was wondering if, um, you planning on allowing the, uh, for that event, the people to park at the church, I mean, across the street, at the town parking lot? Um, those are the things that I have.
Can you give me that date again?
June 22nd, from 9:05.
I know where.
This is from New York, Spring Branch Drive, uh, also Trinity Church, uh, because my next question is about that. The parking lot agreement with Trinity Church, I believe, is back in your ballpark, and we were wondering if it was gonna get back into park anytime soon, if we, if we have to go back to our attorney, so.
Yeah.
I don't wanna follow any of that necessarily. Uh, they came up at our meeting, and I thought I would have acted. Uh, again, Spring Branch Drive, I can't believe you did that today. Uh, they did very well, uh, and I do, I would drive those people. When I leave my house, I go straight up, no speed.
How long's the speed limit, of course? It's like a bad out of hell.
Yeah, I, I've stood up with the weedy ones for a long time, so, uh, but they did a really good job. Um, everybody, I've talked to people about them down the street, and they're all going, yay for the speed, yes, look. And as far as volunteers, you have to welcome, and you don't, and I can say that on a personal level.
John, do we have any, um, comment online?
I do, I have Joe Horclay, Joe?
Okay.
Uh, Joe Horclay, Marlboro Pike, um, first, I'd like to thank John again for the work that he did for the, the photo at the monument. Um, we, we wouldn't have managed to pull that off without him. Um, also wanted to mention that the library is having their kickoff to summer reading, uh, on the eighteenth of June, starting at 4:00 PM, and I think it's running till seven, um, so if anyone has kids they wanna bring down, um, there'll, there's normally activities and stuff, um, and also we're having board game night tomorrow from 6:00 to 9:00 for anyone who wants to come down.
What's the age group for the library event?
Uh, they run them pretty young, um, I mean, they'll sign up adults there, but, uh, I guess of reading age, but.
They actually have a, I think they have a toddler thing, where you read the book.
Library confirmed.
Okay, thank you.
I'm pretty sure it's a toddler, to, to read to them.
Okay, and, and there is like.
I'm sorry, we have to let, um, Joe, did you have any more to your comment? He's done, okay, sorry, you can go, okay.
Uh, nope, that was it.
Okay, I just didn't wanna interrupt his time. Um, all right, anyone else?
No, that's it.
Okay. All right, um, so we're not gonna do preliminary approval of next meeting agenda because we already sort of said it. We're gonna skip over this piece, um, and move on to, well, first of all, Marlboro Day Festival and Parade, Saturday, June 8th, it's gonna be fun, you are a resident and you come to the town table, there is a resident-only gift, you do have to, um, either be on the VIR list or get yourself on the VIR list, so we can confirm you're a town resident. Um, we are excited for this, uh, registration, I think is open for like another day or two, um, and then we're gonna go through and, you know, make sure we don't have all of the same things. Um, so we'll see you all there, and then I think we're moving on to adjournment. So, Commissioner Lot, is there a second? Commissioner Profess, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And unanimous, closure of the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you.